They would have arrest powers, they would wear green and whites, and they would be armed. But that position is about $66,000 per unit, which is dramatically different than about the $103,000, $104,000 that the sheriff pays a typical patrol deputy or what we call an SRD-1. And so that dramatically drives down the cost.
And that—
What's that?
Can you say those two numbers?
An SRD-1 is about $103,000 per unit, and SRD-2 is 65. It almost touches $66,000.
That $103,000, that's split between us and the sheriff?
That's the—
Or is that our half?
Currently, that $103 is shared equally between us and the county commission by way of the sheriff's office.
So the $103 is the total cost of the unit?
Correct. Now, that's on average. There's some sergeants and lieutenants mixed in there, so if you were trying to reconcile back to the sheriff's budget, you've got 11 at one pay grade, two at another, and one at a lieutenant's pay grade.
And—hold on, Jane, I know if you wanted to—
Well, I just want to clarify something. The proposal for next year, we're still talking about with the sheriff, unincorporated Sarasota County, correct? We're not talking about the schools now. All of our elementary schools are not in the unincorporated part of the county, correct?
That is correct.
So we're only looking at doing something with the sheriff's office for SRD-2s for those unincorporated areas that he currently supports?
No.
I would—
That happens to be one of our law enforcement partners there. So in my conversation with the sheriff is that if we went to the municipalities, and so that leaves us a number of other schools, that there are five in Northport, four in the city of Sarasota, and one in Venice, that if they—
One in there?
Just Venice Elementary School. Yep.
I see.
If this—we'll just use the city of Northport. Our request to the city of Northport is that we would like to add school resource officers at the five elementary schools within their jurisdiction, and we would like for them to continue their current agreement of sharing the cost of that unit 50/50. If they said we're not able to split the cost of growing the SRO program and said we need the full $100,000 that it costs us for a deputy in the city of Northport, then the sheriff has said, "I am prepared to expand the SRD-2 program into the elementary schools of the cities," but only after you've tried to work with him. He doesn't want to step on any toes, but he said, you know, "If you can't get there, I'll help you." The law is very specific. It uses the term superintendent, it uses the term sheriff. It does not talk about the board, it does not talk about the chief of police, it does not talk about cities. It is very specific that the mandate is laid at the sheriff and the superintendent. Clearly, a mandate to me extends to you as board members, but there is no obligation placed upon the cities in this legislation. It is left with the sheriff.
Eric, and then Shirley.
I just want to go back to the differential of the number. So the cost to us is roughly $51,000 and change for every—
Well, now you have it in front of you, and so—
But for clarification, this—and for what we have in front—thank you, thank you. For what we have in front of us is the current staffing, what we've had in place this past year, correct?
That is—that is our current SRO program.
So—but do we have anything that is a projection into the next year from a financial—because it's—obviously, we're adding elementary, so do we have anything that has included that?
We do not, because that's evolving. We have made a request of the city of Northport to add five officers. I've made that request of the city manager. He has to take that request to his council. He is not optimistic that that is going to be returned and that they're going to want to do a 50/50 split. In the city of Northport, they currently have 14 vacancies, and I'm asking him to hire five new officers and assign them to our schools, and he says, "Hey, you know, if the sheriff is willing to do an SRD-2 program, that might be a good option for all of us. I can't fill my 14 vacancies, much less if I had 19."
And that was—that was Northport?
Yes.
Okay. Shirley, I'm sorry, did I get—I—
Yeah, I didn't even get to finish. He stopped me.
I'm so sorry, I'm sorry. Eric, and then Shirley, apologies.
I just want to make sure I understand that if we went to SRD-2 and we end up paying 100%, we're talking about—for the unincorporated county, we're talking about $13,000 per person, roughly, on average?
Well, no, because the—
Because 64 minus 53—
Correct. So what we have built in—
Taking the numbers you gave me.
Yep. What we built into our school-level budgets for those elementary schools is $66,150. And if you say, "Where did that number come from?", that is 180 days of school times seven and a half hours times the sheriff's off-duty rate, which gave us a baseline of what is the worst-case scenario, which is we have to use off-duty police officers during the 18, 19 school year. Nobody wants to do that, it's heavily taxing, but that is what we built our budgets at. So the budget documents that you have in front of you has continuation of the current program at our current contractual levels, plus an additional $66,150 per elementary school site that is currently without an SRO.
Okay.
So we have the ability, in this budget, without any alteration, to accommodate the SRD-2 program. His number came in below $66,150, of which we are extremely grateful, because if we'd had to pay for the full cost of an SRD-1, it would have put us into $100,000. So we now have an option before us that, number one, allows us to tap into the funding source that the state made available. We always have the option to go and hire our own security and to go with the Guardian and other things, but if we did that, we would do—we would forfeit the money the state gave us to expand the SRO program.
Which is 2.399310, right? Is that the—that's the amount?
No, it's the 1.4. It's the 85% of 1.4.
Oh, okay.
Right.
Got it.
Right.
No, he keeps cutting me off when I finish my question. So I'll say really, really quick, so you don't have time to cut me off. So if we—does your budget include putting SD—SRD-2s into the high schools and middle schools, and what kind of cost savings does that result if we were going to do that to the mobile?
My conversation with the sheriff last night was, "I can do one or the other, but not both." That if you want to expand the SRD-2 program into where we existing have SRD-1s, if you want to replace the SRD-1s at the middle and high school, we can do that, but that would preclude me from going into the elementary schools. Is that essentially, he's saying, "I'm going to go out and hire 14 now. If you want me to replace my 11 deputies in the middle and high schools, I'm happy to take it to a number of 25, probably need a couple more subs, 26, 27. Or I can go to the elementary schools by hiring another 11 deputies, but I don't feel like I can ramp up a program at 35, but I think I can get to the mid-20s." So he's saying, "Tell me what direction you want to go in. If you want SRD-2s in all of your schools in unincorporated Sarasota, we can do that. If you want it in all of your elementary schools across the entire county, we can do that, but the ability to do both in a one-year"—listen, this is a heavy lift. Great credit goes out to them. I met with them on the 15th and got a memo back saying, "We can do this program." The idea that they're going to write a job description, post, advertise, hire, train, and deliver deputies to our schools in August is a huge lift. So the SRD-2 program, it's a godsend. I mean, there's no other word, is it has rolled back our costs, not just our costs, but any municipality's costs. We can talk about who was going to pay it, but at the end of the day, it's a taxpayer in Sarasota was going to pay $100,000 before I got this memo yesterday afternoon, which drove that cost under $66,000. And so our question is, how long do we want to wait on the cities to tell us if they want to split the cost of an existing officer? Or do I go to the sheriff and say, "I want SRD-2s in all of our elementary schools," or do you want to explore? There are some other options.
Shirley.
My point was, again, that it's going to be hard to even find these people to fill these positions, to some extent. I mean—I mean, because we don't have them right now, they're not there. These would be new positions we'd have to hire. And I see that we are already using sheriffs in Booker Middle and Emma Booker. They're—in the city, aren't they? Is Emma Booker not in the city, Sarasota?
Emma Booker Elementary School?
Emma Booker—there's only one Emma Booker, actually. There's a Booker High School and Booker Middle School, but Emma Booker is an elementary school. That's the one I'm talking about.
And it has a sheriff's deputy, it is an unincorporated—it's about—
It's unincorporated.
The railroad tracks is the city line, they're a couple hundred yards to the east of the city limits.
I didn't know that. See, all these years—
We have SPD at Booker High and Booker Middle.
And there's also a pot of money, but it didn't come to us. I think it went right to the sheriff for training, and we—in addition to SROs, we also have security personnel at our schools?
In our middle and high schools, we have security monitors, which are eyes and ears. They are unarmed, they are not law enforcement personnel.
And they're totally paid by the school district, and they're our employees?
That is correct.
Are any of those employees—I think if we're looking at arming anybody in our school district, we would want to look at those security monitors that we've hired for security that might have some of this law enforcement background?
I would love to have that conversation with you at our executive session.
Okay.
Chop that down.
But I'm not just—for the basis of this conversation, I am not proposing that we use the Guardian program to meet our obligation to any school site. The Guardian program would be supplemental to providing an officer through one of the municipalities.
And I know there's been a lot of concern with the public that we are looking at arming any of our school site employees, such as teachers, principals, coaches. That's not in our plan, is it? Or I guess—is that something we have to do in the executive session? Because I'm getting a lot of concern about that.
Yep, no, I agree. And then—so let's take a couple steps back.
I want to clarify that.
We have an executive session today, and—but I think before us right now was—if we go back to the conversation, is the program we have in place, an alternative program that has been provided from a cost benefit by our sheriff to expand and be compliant with the law. That's where we are right now.
Right.
And we have—and also, it's very important to know, we have a timeline on it, rightfully so, because there are other government agencies that have to do their budgets and accordingly. So we need to make our decision and respond accordingly and plan accordingly. So I recognize that we have to—there are other municipalities, in my understanding, in our conversations, is that there have been back—there have been conversations, but there has not been final offers or decisions made on various partners we currently use. But there also are offers provided that—from another partner that we currently use, right? So is that correct?
So we have a clear offer from the sheriff, we have a clear offer from the city of Venice, we have a clear ask with the city of Northport without a response, and we're not there with the city of Sarasota yet. We've not made a clear ask of them for the 18, 19 school year, and part of it is because my ask would not reflect our current cost with them.
Jane.
So this is the current staffing and the current cost of that staffing?
That is correct.
So we are to assume that this going forward, these would be the costs for next year?
No, ma'am.
No, that's right.
So that's what we really need to—
That's correct.
So—may I?
Yes.
So in the budget documents that you have in front of you, we could fully implement the SRD-2 program. We've made an allocation of $66,150 per school site. The sheriff has said, "I can provide you SRD-2s at a number less than $66,150." My advice is that we accept his offer, is that we go to him and that we not wait on the city of Northport to tell us no, and that we not even make the ask of the city of Sarasota, but that we say, "Would you please move forward on an SRD-2 program at all of our elementary schools, with the exception of Venice?" Venice has offered to split the cost of an SRO. Our cost would be $51,556, and I think that we should accept their offer, since that number is less than $60,000. And so for the city of Venice to provide an SRO to Venice Elementary, I think we should move forward and submit that in a contract, but I think that with your permission, you should direct me to correspond with the sheriff today to continue to develop the SRD program and to place it in all of our elementary schools.
Shirley, and Caroline.
Basically, by accepting the budget as-is, that's included, right? That's already included in the budget?
The SRD-2 program can be funded through the budget as it sits on your desk today. Yes, ma'am?
So that—that would be the vote that we would take this afternoon, and then would we probably also need another motion for you to work with them? Or is that something you're already doing at this table this afternoon?
Well, I have the ability to go to the sheriff and say, "Let's keep working," to the point that I have a contract to bring to you. I just want to know that that's the direction. I don't need a formal motion for you to tell me, "Keep working with the sheriff and bring us a contract that puts SRD-2s in our elementary schools," and when I have that contract, it'll appear as a board item.
Caroline.
I think that's a smart move. I think that that's exactly what you should do. I agree.
I—I agree too. I just want to make—I—so I'm pleased to hear us move direction there, but my other question is financially—so you're—I'm just clarifying here. You're saying that the budget that's in front of us right now and the offer that the sheriff's department has provided us, it can be funded through—
The SRD-2 part of his offer. We have not talked about the SRO part one of his offer.
Understood. Okay, well, I agree. I don't think there's any reason to wait. I just want to make sure I have clarity, and I don't know if part of that is sort of the executive session, it's not a budget implication, but I want to make sure that—I just—I don't want to—I don't want to wait, and I think an offer's been presented, and let's move forward. So SR-1, so we're good on the SRDs? Does anyone—
I just want to make sure what you're saying. You're saying that you're going to move forward doing SRD-2s, not just in elementary schools, but in all the schools, or just the elementary schools?
Just in elementary schools.
And because—
Because he said, "I can—my capacity is in the mid-20s. I don't think my capacity's in the mid-30s," and so—
So our budget here shows that we're going to pay for 100% of the SROs at all the high schools and middle schools?
We're not there yet. Stick with me.
Okay.
Okay. Then I—I can't answer the question he asked.
That's—all right, then keep going. I just want to make sure there's clarity for—for everyone.
It's not, it's not, it's not clear.
All right, let's let—the superintendent finish.
Is it that you can fund in this budget the necessary SRD-2s for the elementary schools?
Yes, ma'am.
That's what's in here?
That is correct.
Nothing about middle or high schools?
Correct.
Okay, I got it.
My budget continues our current—rolls forward our current contracts.
Right.
So in regards to the SRO-1 program, the sheriff and his correspondence said that we should build into our budget the full cost, which has gone now from $749,000 to a little over $1,505,000. That is not contemplated in your budget.
Right. I got that.
Okay. So I have budgeted the expansion of the program to cover elementary schools. I did not budget taking on the full cost of the existing program.
Right.
Is that the question you were waiting for me to get to?
Yes, yes. I have not—if—so I don't—I mean, I can't answer whether I support SRD-2 because they're interlinked, and so not knowing what the price is for the entire project, I can't answer the question. So right now, my answer is no, until I hear the answer about how you're going to pay for the entire program.
Well, fair point, good point. Shirley.
But you have three.
Yeah.
We're not voting here, but I think it's—
No, we're not.
There's clarity in what we're—what we're figuring out, and there is a budget implication, whether or not, whatever part—I mean, there would always have been some very dis—we knew this a month ago, we are going to be faced with some very, very challenging budgetary discussions to get—to respond to what has occurred. So with that, I just want to make sure there was clarity, but good point. Shirley, did you have a statement?
Clarify, and then— To clarify, you're saying that the sheriff is now saying he's not going to pay the other half of the current SROs we have?
That's what his letter says. Yes, ma'am.
Well, yeah, I think we need to talk to our county commissioners, too, to see if we can keep it forward. But the other thing is—is the other part of that purchase services is the mental health, and you know—
Can we please not go there now? Let's workshop that separately.
Well, what I'm—I'm going to say, "Thank you for parking that money." We just learned, what, two weeks ago what it is, and to—to come to a solution on how to do this, I think does—because I was very concerned that we're going to have to budget all of these things right away without having discussions on it. So I am glad you've parked that, and I'm looking forward to those discussions in the future.
Let me keep it parked one more month, and we'll have this exact same conversation around mental health.
Do you require a plan, so?
Right.
Okay. So how best—and again, I remind everyone that this comes down to a strategy staffing and financial, but it's not that we have—again, it's really—it's a safety to be mindful. But I also personally want to be mindful of the way in which we choose to have comments, because we are relying on partners who have—whether whoever they are, have funded a portion of this over a series of years, so—and I want, just learning by past practices, that we be cognizant of strategy, because we want to remain strong partners with those people in order to see a solution come forward. So with that said, and I really want to stress that, we now—so now that everyone understands the one—there is essentially a deficit of 1.5 to get whole, is that correct?
No, ma'am, the deficit is $750,000. I—I had budgeted for the current—
The differential is seven—okay, so $740,000. And SRDs—the difference between SRDs and SR—well, I say SROs, so SRD-1, which is in our middle and high schools, correct?
Correct.
And those are—have a much more deep instructional component than the SRD—
Absolutely.
—1, okay.
Well, they are current sheriff's deputies. The SROs-1s are—
Correct.
And they do full duty of other sorts when they're not involved with our schools, and they are an integral part of the team. I like having them there. I think that they do a great service to our schools, and you know, other than the fact that we have, what, three—we have three—we have four from the city of Sarasota. So we would continue our existing contracts for those involvements that we have with Sarasota, with Venice, and with Northport.
From two to—yes, so we currently have four with—excuse me, three with the city of Sarasota. We would seek to continue that contract. We have two with the city of Venice. We would seek to expand that to three. And we have four with the city of Northport, and we would seek to maintain that contract.
So we would maintain—in the proposal that we have, we would maintain those existing contracts at the existing levels for those municipalities of cities, and then we would want to engage the sheriff to stay in those schools that he's in now, two in Riverview, for an example.
Correct.
At the current rate.
We have to be prepared for an—I mean, that's the difference. And those are the discussions that we have to have, and it is—it is what has been presented. Quite frankly, we have something that's been presented—we don't have something that's been presented by our other partners, so—and we don't have time to wait, so I just—that's where I think this conversation needs to go.
I think that—sorry. I think that's why we need to give the superintendent the direction to move forward on our behalf to work with our municipalities.
And so the sheriff has made me an offer. I have the ability clearly to accept his offer. I don't know if I have the ability to counter his offer, and I guess that's the direction that I seek from you. The easy thing is, at your direction, I can go back and craft a letter and say, "Not only do I accept your offer, I would like to expand it into the elementary schools within the cities." And I know, based on my conversation, we would be done, and he would accept that. If I sent him other correspondence saying, "I wish to continue some level of cost sharing," I believe the conversation would go beyond the sheriff, because it is funded by this county commission, and I would tell you that would require a level of involvement of our board, is that at that point, you're in the realm of elected officials, and I think I should provide you information and allow one of you or all of you to engage on that topic.
So this really needs to be covered in executive session?
No.
So we can do it here?
Correct. The only exemption to negotiation is with a union, a negotiation with—the sheriff would not be covered by the exemption. We have to have this conversation right here in the open.
Okay. So what I'm hearing is that the sheriff feels that, based on statute, we are responsible for all cover—all costs.
The new statute makes that very clear. Any cost sharing that any entity did with us would not be under an obligation under the law.
Is it currently? Was—I was going to say, never was, wasn't it?
Yeah.
It never was, but—
Never was under law, no.
If an entity a year ago would have said, "The only way we can continue this program is for you to bear the full cost," we as a board could contemplate ending the program. We don't have that option. Now the—what's different is now this program is mandated, and the legal responsibility is crystal clear.
For the school board.
Correct.
For historical nature, though, that it is important that it was not mandated before, and there were willing participants to split the cost, so I mean—
Absolutely.
That's an important component as we go forward.
I'm going someplace, Richard.
Okay. Go ahead.
So that means that we have to add in to our budget the costs of the SROs in the unincorporated—unincorporated areas?
The $750 would cover the unincorporated areas. Are you contemplating within the cities?
No, I didn't get there yet.
Gotcha.
I'm left with that alone until you negotiate it.
Right.
Okay, so is that in the budget?
Yes.
Okay.
Our budget contemplates what you have in front of us.
So the SRD-2s for elementaries are in our budget?
They are.
And the replacement of the deputies of the sheriff's office, that's in our budget as SRD-2s?
The current staffing that you see in front of you, our current contract with all four agencies is in our current budget—
Okay.
—plus an expansion into the elementary schools.
But if we went with SRD-2s, would that reduce our costs from the sheriff and the municipalities?
It would, except if we said, "Please replace the 11 deputies that are under our current contract with SRD-2s," we would have to devise another plan to serve the elementary schools within the cities. It's one or the other.
Right, okay, thank you.
Shirley, did you have—okay, Eric?
I just want to follow on what Caroline Zucker just said. She asked you, "Does our budget include funding the SROs?" And you had talked about just going back to the sheriff and accepting his plan. If you go back to the sheriff and accept his plan, are those within the budget?
I'm $750,000 short. I did not contemplate the full cost of the existing SROs with the sheriff in the budget that is in front of you.
I just want to clarify her question, that that is not in the budget.
That—that is correct.
Thank you.
Jane.
This is what is in our budget.
That is in your budget, as well as—
As well as—
$66,150 per elementary school that currently is without security.
Correct. But if this were to change, the top-line item would change by an additional $700,000. But if this were to change, the top-line item would change by an additional $749,000 if we were to pay the full without a split, correct? And then the other entities, the city of Sarasota, Venice, and Northport, who currently split, may also choose not to split, and therefore, what impact would that have? So we really don't—don't know those answers either, do we?
No.
Correct.
Well—
They're in negotiations.
But I will—I'm just gonna have to be candid here. The problem is, is this is not new conversation. And the problem is, is we have spent 20-some minutes just trying to clarify where we are and where we're going, and we need—to—and we need to make a decision. And I understand there have been conversations with other partners, and they—but even having a range would help give us a sense of what kind of—because we also have to make decisions contingent upon where—what potentially will happen here on our operating budget. And I don't feel like we're in a position, we're not prepared, and that is disappointing. I understand at one—to one part of it, and that's because sheriff has been proactive and shared and provided this information. But this is not new information, by way of knowing we needed to take action. So I'm frustrated, because I have been asking behind the scenes, "What's our plan? What options do we have?" Because we, as a board, will also have—the decision-making here has implications on the decision-making on the general operating fund. Those are serious discussions, and we need to be prepared for them.
Up until yesterday, we were not aware of some things, so there was no way that could have been projected. We were not aware until yesterday.
I don't think that's entirely accurate. Eric, go ahead.
Yeah, I don't believe that's entirely accurate either. It wasn't till—was it this morning or yesterday that I read about it in the newspaper? But it was made aware of people before that. But I found out from other people besides the school district, but—I agree—
No, I found out from the superintendent.
I did not.
Well, I called him.
I don't need to tit-for-tat. I just—I—my point is, is we are—we have—we were in a position where we acted quickly, where we knew we were going to have to respond, didn't know what the legislature was gonna do. We met the day of that, right before those decisions. It's been two weeks since then. I know other districts are going into action quickly, so I'm just disappointed that we are still here today. Even if we got a letter updating yesterday, we knew we had to make some kind of decision-making process, and I just don't think we're prepared.
I thought our decision-making process was, what kind of security are we going to hire? Are we going to keep SROs? Or are we going to go to the SRD-2s? Or are we going to go to some Marshall Plan? And I don't think it was until last night, when we understood that full ramification of what the costs would be for us. And if you had some magic way of finding it out, other than before the superintendent did, then you should have told him.
I did not find out before the superintendent did.
No, nor did I.
And for the record, the superintendent filed out at 1:30 yesterday.
I think, yes, that we found out yesterday that the sheriff was proposing that we cover the entire cost of the SRO-1s. I mean, that was that letter that we received yesterday, correct? I think—I don't know that that's set in stone yet, because, you know, we still have some discussions that we can have with county commissioners. You know, do the county commissioners not want to cover that? Or maybe—you know, we still have to work with—the sheriff. And I think if—he comes back and says, "No, we're not gonna cover that $749,000," we're gonna have to come back and get out our red pencils and go back and find other places in the budget to cut, because we are required to do that now. And—I—but—I mean, I think the sheriff and the county knows how difficult that would be for us to go in and do that. But I don't think we should stop right now. I think we should continue on. I think we've got a good plan in front of us with these—a way to put these SR-2s in. And I think the sheriff has shown us the willingness to work with us. I think he still will.
I agree.
I mean, so I—I'm not—I'm not as concerned about that—that $749. I think we can work that out. I'm pretty—I'm—I think the county and the sheriff will work with us on that. I'm hoping. You know, if not, we'll—we'll come back with our sharpened pencils, be they red or black.
We've been doing that for years.
So from a quick down-and-dirty budget perspective, if all of the entities came back and said, "You have to pay 100%," so we could just assume on the SRO-1 program, it would be double the $1,450,000 that's in here?
No. We're only paying 20% with the city, so you wouldn't double that number?
Oh, okay. Correct. You're right. So—because I was just saying, down and dirty, we're anywhere from—
We're paying 20% or 80%.
They're paying—
They're—correct.
That's a big—
Correct. Yeah, you wouldn't double that.
That deal just got a lot better, but—
Right. So—but it could be anywhere from like—if it's just the sheriff, it's a $600,000 implication on the—on the budget.
No, just the sheriff would be—
In addition to the other amounts of money that we're already paying.
Oh, the one that we came in under, on the other ones?
Because we came in under on the other ones, and then they changed the minimum funding to 250,000 from 60-some thousand. So that actually can apply to the old SRO program. It's $1,284,000. It's new SRO only. Correct, the sheriff. And all of that is shared with charters, correct?
So say that once more.
So it could be $3.5 million for the new SROs that come in at budget or under, and then if it's just 750 more for the sheriff, it would be about 3.5 million. Our total funding's 2.4, so it's about a $1,001 deficit in total. And currently, the deficit is 500,000.
But it'd be a lot more if the sheriff wasn't proactive, given us these alternative ways to solve our problem.
And that's a true statement.
Absolutely. If he would have come back with a proposal that says, "I would put a deputy in each one of your elementary schools," that price would have been 100 and—let's see, 53.5 times two, it would have been 107 per unit, and he came in with a $66,000 option. Yes, absolutely.
Absolutely.
And I think Ms. Brown has offered a couple of times about the county commission. I think that—I think it's well-served if she would go and talk to the county commissioners and see if she can, you know, change their mind to make sure that we could do a funding split.
I don't know that we even have to change their mind yet. We don't know where they're—they are at this, because I don't think the sheriff has presented his budget to the county commission yet.
Well, I appreciate what the sheriff has done. I appreciate the fact that he came up with a plan for the SRD-2s and offered that for us. I appreciate what he's done.
I agree. I think—I think we're at a good place, and this—is a good plan for our elementary. And I think we just need to try to work the details out. But he is proactive, and I do appreciate his work. And it is between the superintendent and the sheriff. That's—that's the way it's written. So take it away, Todd.
So may I summarize what I'm hearing, is that I would like to correspond with the sheriff today, tomorrow at the latest, that we would like to move forward with the SRD-2 program at all of our elementary schools, with the exception of Venice Elementary, where they've agreed to provide an SRO and cost share with us, and that we would like to continue the existing SRO-1 program in our middle and high schools, but would like the opportunity to have future dialogue with him and the commission about how we share the cost for that program. Is that the communication?
And so why wouldn't you want SRD-2s at the middle and high school?
Because I couldn't put them at all the elementaries if I did that. I can only go in one direction. There may be the possibility, a year from now, to add another 11, but at this point, he's real concerned about being able to stand up a program with 14, has said, "If you push me, yeah, I can go to 25 or 26, but there's no way I can get to 37."
But you're not asking any board member to go to county commissioners and feel them out or anything like that?
I'm asking all of you to go to county commissioners and talk about the cost sharing for the existing SRO-1 program.
So I know Ms. Brown talked about it.
Well, okay. So let me—for a planning preparedness standpoint, I just want clarity. So we're—we're asking that the continuation of the split take place? Is that what I'm—
He sent us a letter contrary to that.
But I just—I'm trying to understand. Is that what we're be—I get that we're trying—I—I'm misunderstanding, so—
Yes, Richard.
So you want to see if there's instead—okay.
Yes.
I would like to, in addition to potentially seeing what options there are, be prepared and plan in the event there are not. Because, again, I go back to my calendar, and at March 6, I believe it was, before we knew, there was—there were estimates put on the table at that discussion. That was a part of our executive session with our partners, and that isn't too far off of—actually, it was more than. But—so, again, I say, I think we all knew we were going to have a budget implication that we personally, as school district sheriffs, would be owning. And I don't know—while I definitely agree that we can proactively continue the discussions, I would like us to be prepared to act accordingly, based on what's been presented to us.
We've talked about this four or five years ago with the sheriff. I had many discussions with him about our stepping up at some point in time to the plate and being able to pay the full ride for—for our SRO-1s. And so, you know, I think we have to be prepared for several options, if you will, going forward.
Eric?
That would mean that we'd probably have to look at cutting other areas of the budget.
That is correct.
Yes.
But this is not new news. That's kind of what I keep saying.
Does this money that we spend in our referendum dollars for the monitors, the security monitors, would that have any impact in eliminating the need for that with some of these implications?
No, we do not currently have security monitors where we are contemplating SRD-2s. It's not that if we could put an SRD-2 in, I could cut a monitor and save money. I think it's a great idea.
Jeff?
We need a cut.
So when are we—like, what—so what is the process here? Talk to me about timeline, because I don't want to get farther down the road in the event—
I—I—I would like us to see some proposed budget cuts the next time that we—we meet. Regardless about the security issue, we have other issues at our district where we're deficit spending, and I think, you know, these are things that—we need to tackle now, not kick them down the road, because at the end of next year, it's going to be 7.5, and if we continue the deficit spending, I mean, we're gonna have to cut at some point. Question is, do you cut a little bit along the way, or you do one massive cut at one time? I'd rather cut a little bit along the way.
I would like to address that. We're having a conversation here about 750,000. Could contemplate it going as high as 1.1 if all the other agencies follow suit. Are you contemplating that I bring you a list of cuts at 750, 1.1, or some other number?
Oh, no, I think it's gonna—it's gonna end up being more than that, because we were deficit spending before we even had this conversation.
That is correct. If you think back to our March 6 meeting, when you ratified our collective bargaining agreement, you asked me directly, "What is the implication of the collective bargaining agreement?" And I said that we would end this fiscal year with a fund reserve of 9.5% to 10%, and we would end the 1819 school year with a fund reserve of 7.5% to 8%. And the budget that you have in front of you is 7.61.
Shirley?
You know, I—I—I really think that, you know, if we were—go to the sheriff and say, "Geez, we can't afford picking up the whole cost of these," you know, and say, "Well, rather than having these officers, we can only afford the SR-2s. If not this year, then next year." I mean, he's got a investment in these—these, what, 14 officers? You know, I—I—I don't know. I think the sheriff will work with us, and I think the county commission will work with us. I don't think we need to start running out and—cutting things and getting people upset yet. Let's wait until we hear what the county commission and what the sheriff says after the superintendent talks to them. I mean, I'm—I'm not—I don't think that it's—it's a—we only got the one letter, and we don't even know for sure, you know, where he was on that, how solid he was on that. I think we need to wait and have another conversation with this—not all of us, but the superintendent—have another conversation with the sheriff. I mean, I—I—I think if we start coming in and cutting the budget right away and upsetting our staff, you know, that's gonna be a problem. I, too, am concerned about, you know, how we're going down in the—in the fund reserve, but, you know, we kind of knew that was happening, and we can talk back on the—on the salaries. And I—and I take a breath when I say, "You mean, we didn't put a thing in there that says if we don't get at least X amount in new revenue, that we can't keep these new salaries for next year?" Because I think none of us would have looked at—and it was one of my concerns when we were doing the two-year budget. We don't know what the funding is gonna be for next year. Well, now we do. And, you know, I think that we've signed the contract. You know, we're going forward. We can't change that at this point. And we gotta, you know, play with the dealt—the hand we're dealt, and this is where we're at. And I think we've still got a budget that meets our needs, although I'm—I gotta hand it to you, you put it in there, getting those numbers out for us. The only one number that I would like to see is, you know, we're on—I don't know if we've turned from page three to four yet, but—
Which—oh.
On page four, when we look at what the state funds are, I would like to—you said it's—the difference is mainly the inclusion of the best and the brightest. When we get these FEF—these these funds, I would like to break out, these are the FEFP funds, and these are the funds for the best and the brightest and the A-plus. If we could break those out, because those really aren't part of our operating dollars, those are flow-through dollars to our employees, if I'm not mistaken, aren't the A-plus dollars and the best and brightest? Just—could we break those dollars out so that we're not comparing those numbers? Page eight breaks them out. Well, when I'm looking at state funds, it—it gets a little harder when you put all these things in there. It would just be easier to say, "Here—it is. We know what it is." So when you break those dollars— Is the A-plus and the best and brightest in there?
Yes, it's all the A-plus.
A-plus would be included in it, because the best and brightest is a flow-through, so the A-plus funds are already in the FEFP.
I'm sorry.
The A-plus school recognition funds are part of the FEFP.
Oh, they are? All right, so—
The funding calculations. But they're in here.
So the best and the brightest was—
4.3.
4.3. So if we took 4.3 out, then we are—and—
Then it's an increase.
So the revenues would have increased?
Correct. We're serving more students, so total revenues are higher.
Yeah, so we would have gotten about $2 million more, but it's for—how many students? 500?
Yeah, it's $5 million total increase in the FEFP.
Thank you.
Yeah, so I—I just want to say that, again, that the need to—to cut predates the security issue.
Yep.
Okay? Security issue just made it—exacerbated the situation, okay? We were already deficit spending, so that—that's one. And two, I just want to make sure people are clarified. Sheriff just didn't write one letter. The sheriff has written four letters to us now about this issue. So, you know, when you're talking about how-how he felt about—about the situation, this is the fourth letter that the—I don't know how—how—I mean, I'm from my first term on the board, so I don't know how it goes, but I don't know how often the sheriff is writing letters to us, but he's written four letters in the past, like, 30 days on this —on this one issue.
But I think the only letter talking about not funding the SROs was yesterday's letter. The rest of the letters were, "Let's work together," and we had not been able to get together to meet, so that Todd could not move faster than the board could.
Well, I think there's a point of clarification that I think Todd made earlier, is that this is between the sheriff and the superintendent, and is the way—the way the language works. But for clarity, again—
What do we want? But how do—which program did we want? It wasn't until today where I actually heard us talking about actually using the SRD-2s.
He—that's—and that's by way—
That was an option. But I never heard us say, "Yes, let's go that way," unless I was deaf.
Again, the determination for the program, for options, in the way the bill's written is truly on a— and I want to be fair to my, my board, this was prior to this conversation today. And that good, that's, that's appropriate. The element is, what that, what that, what those options are, is, in the way the language is written, upon the superintendent to come forward with some options. The only person we have options from is the sheriff, and that's what's today. We don't, we haven't looked at any other of the three options, because I don't think that they've been presented to us. But I'm, and I don't know that, I'm, quite frankly, I like, I'm appreciative of what the sheriff offered, because it's lower cost, it's a solution, because the other ones would have been high, high, high cost. The other, other thing is that I'm concerned, and kind of how I started this, is I don't think it's fair only to go, because the implications of Parkland and deficit spending will hit, if you read even what the sheriff wrote us, I mean, and it's actually a really good point, that he has a service standard to the whole entire community, and he's stepping up to, to support us with a, with a lower-cost option. I don't think, as an elected official who represents a lot of the same constituents of which the county commission would, to say, you guys need to figure out how to save the money, and we, we don't have that practice. So that's where I think, preparing for what other potential circumstances are, that we are going to make cuts, what does that look like? I don't want, and it's not fair to say it's because of, it was, we, it was coming towards us anyway. I don't particularly think it's appropriate to say, no, let's not go through that exercise to see what potentially we need to trim the fat on, and go to the county commission and ask them to do that. I mean, that doesn't make any sense. That doesn't seem very good partnership.
We haven't talked about any cuts. I, I don't know the county commissioners maybe as well as the other people on the board, but I would think that, that if we, I'm sorry? I would think that if you went to them, and you were asking them to, to fund something, and we're not willing to cut our own, I gotta, I don't know how, how they would react, but I got a feeling that they're going to react, you know, negatively, that they're, they're going to look at the raises we've gotten and, and given, and, and they're, they're having to cut, and for us going in front of them, I, I think that it lessens our ability to get our goal if we don't do that. So not to do those things and just simply say, well, go out there and see if you can continue with the 50/50, that undermines our ability to, to do that. And so I think that we need to talk about, you know, rolling back some things and, and cutting some things.
That was my point.
So when, when can we have those? Discussions.
I'm waiting for three board members to tell me to bring them a cut list and what the target is on that cut list. That's kind of why I'm listening intently.
I think you've heard what I.
I mean, I think it's our responsibility and due diligence to be prepared. We now know that there's a potential either way, and that we need to look at, and when we say cuts, it doesn't always mean personnel necessarily. I mean, there may be some other strategies we need to focus on. So, but we have to have those conversations, and this is not a first time you've heard me say this, so. That's two. But I would not vote, I mean, so there would be, we just want to go through status quo and just wait, and then eventually have this conversation later? I, that just doesn't make sense to me.
But the problem is, it undermines our ability to get the 50/50, I think.
I don't think it undermines our ability to do anything. I would like to give the superintendent the ability to be able to move forward with this, with, with what we discussed today with the SROs, and, and let's see where we go. I, I don't want to jump into, starting to make cuts now, we just passed a referendum, I do not want to stop making cuts.
How do we go for 740,000?
I think we should move on, because we're past.
I'm confused.
I just, I don't see that there's clarity. I, I think our, our job, that we are elected to do, is to, to prepare budgets and get, and respond to ebb and flow circumstances. This is today, where we are today is not a surprise, regardless of what offers were provided to us. So there aren't options, and we wait. I don't find that we're going to benefit the circumstance, I think we're going to make it worse, so.
To say that it's not a surprise, I think it was a surprise yesterday at 1:30, when the letter came saying that the sheriff is not going to pick up the other half. I think it was a surprise when we got the dollars from the legislature, when the, because we didn't know how much they were going to give us, and that they were going to give us less than what we normally pay for SROs. Those numbers kind of were a surprise. And, and I'm looking at this budget thinking, well, these numbers aren't set in stone yet because we don't know. There are times when you have to make adjustments to a budget, you know, you're relatively new to this process, where funds decline, you find out during the year that your funds decline, or that the legislature holds back money because they found out they weren't getting the kind of money, and we have to come back and make cuts. I don't think that we need to start doing them yet, because I think we still are in negotiations, I would think, the superintendent with these other agencies on the staffing of the SROs. And, and I think that our, our other elected officials, I think, are partners with us, and I don't think they want to turn around and, and dump more of the cost onto this at a time, I think, where it's really sensitive. You know, I think they would look bad, too, if they turned around and said, wait a minute, we're not, we're not going to do, we're not going to provide half of your SROs anymore. We're not going to do that anymore, because we don't think you need it, or we don't think you've done this. I mean, at a time when the need for SROs has escalated, I, I just can't see other elected officials saying, no, we're not going to fund them anymore. So that was a surprise to me. I, maybe it wasn't a surprise to you, but it was a surprise to me that somebody would come at a time when we were asked to do more, that they're going to come forward and do less. So I, I, I don't see this budget written in stone yet. I, I do believe that we might be having some amendments to the budget, and I'm, I, I think we should go forward as it is, even though I was, you know, really concerned about it at first, because not knowing these, and I think you all did a terrific job getting these numbers in as late as they would. If there's ways that we can cut throughout the budget, I would hope that you would be looking for that throughout the year. Maybe you did find some cuts someplace. Maybe we can continue to look for those cuts. But I don't want to give you a number that, that you have to go cut a million dollars out of this budget. I, I, I don't think that's, it's necessary at this time, and I, I don't want you to be putting your efforts onto that, when I want your efforts to be put into, how are we going to staff what we need to staff right now, and going forward and negotiating with, with our partners on this.
Well, I personally don't think we need to, to, to go through that exercise yet, but I do think that looking through as many times as I have, the list of things we fund in the referendum, and the, the security monitoring a million dollars, I think that I would rather see us go with this program than with that. If you can tell me who those people are and how that's benefited us, I really never even noticed that program was funded, or is in existence, until I started, you know, going over the referendum dollars every time. So I, I want to see us go forward. I'm hoping that, that we can do something, and if we can't, we'll, we'll have to make adjustments. But that's money right there, that, that I can see that, that we could move into this program if we have the necessary need to do so. So I'd just like you to go ahead and, and see if you can negotiate this out quickly. I understand the sheriff wants this done by next week, because he has issues with his budget. I, I get that, I know, I know that. And he's very punctual, and very prompt, and very businesslike, and that's all really good for his department. But I, I think that if we can resolve some of these issues by, by the end of business today, that would, that would be a great thing.
Okay, I mean, I've said what I've said, so. Okay. So are that, are you, are we done with the budget then?
Well.
Do we need to?
At this discussion, we're at the top balance of current command, there's no other changes on the expenditure side, other than we're anticipating another small increase by FPL. So that was pretty much about me. And I, I will get to a copy of this comparison.
Yeah.
Between the third calculation and the.
Employee benefits, do we know the, well, I guess, the FRS?
FRS rate, FRS did go up by 4.21%, the rate's now 8.27%.
So that's going to cost us more in employee benefits, but employee benefits have gone down. The health insurance didn't go up, the workers' comp went up, but then also the benefits would go down because of the retiring employees at the top end is, because it looks like we're going down on employee benefits even, or, or does the FRS not come out of the employee?
No, it does. I think part of it is because, yes, the higher-paid employees are retiring, and the lower-paid employees are coming in, so that is also a component.
And that's why the salary is only increasing 1.75%, even though we had a.
Correct.
Okay.
I have no more questions. Anyone else have questions, comments? Very good. Thank you for working your tails off, I really appreciate it. I know this was a, always a unique year, but we could not do it without you guys. Thank you. Next up is CIP discussion, Scott.
You sure you want to come up here?
I do not, I didn't budget, can't stand the budget lady thing, I can't stand you use that word. All right. How are you?
Great. I forgot why we're here. So this is really Kathy's show, but I just wanted to make a couple of opening comments to kind of put the discussion in context. Roll the clock back to, you made a couple of references to our March 6th discussion, I'd like to go to that board meeting. If you remember, at the March 6th board meeting, the superintendent presented you with a series of documents that, that really were the CIP, and the first time you had seen a CIP, that kind of changed its focus. And the CIP that we presented you on March 6th was responsive to a direction that said, we need to establish a, a physical security standard for our schools, and we need to get all of our schools to that standard, or at least work underway to that standard by the start of school this year. Part of what that meant was moving, the number that we used on March the 6th was $25 million into safety and security kind of construction-related things. And so the budget you saw on March the 6th did that. And it did it in a number of ways. It did it through a combination of pulling some money permanently out of places like the annual funding of replacement of buses, it did it by taking some projects out of the CIP, and it did it by moving some projects to the right in the CIP. One of the things that came out of that conversation on the 6th was, do we really need to do this? A couple of the board members expressed an interest in borrowing money to change what that CIP looks like. So what Kathy has given you in your read-ahead and is going to walk you through this morning is essentially a couple of options. One, one of those options brings in a $20 million borrow. We have tied that, so you know, really, to the, to the classroom wing at Pine View. If you borrowed, what would you borrow for? It'd be for the Pine, Pine View wing at Classroom, and so Kathy can walk you quickly through what that borrow does with projects. And then another brings back essentially that same budget in terms of project timing, but doesn't borrow to show you what happens. And part of the reason we did that is because, one of the things that's different between what you're seeing today and what you saw on March the 6th is legislatively, the charter schools have gotten money through PICO that has allowed us to effectively take the 1819 funding wedge for charter school payments out for just that one year. So that appropriation goes away, you now have $8 million of capital available to you to do things that you didn't have in the budget you saw on March the 6th. So we wanted you to see how that impacts the budget with a $20 million borrow and without a $20 million borrow. So you'll see both of those. I think Mitzi is still in the room, she has, she has one of our, one of our analysts with us to, if you wanted to talk about specifically about borrowing and what borrowing would look like. So we're prepared to do that. Also, in your read-ahead, we gave you a, a snapshot of your debt service profile, really for a couple of reasons. We wanted you to see that you do indeed have a lot of headroom in debt if you elected to borrow. And second, it kind of gives you a picture of where your current debt pays off. So that's kind of a longer than I mentioned to be lead-in, so I'm going to ask Kathy to walk through the read-ahead.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning. Good morning.
I'm sorry, I was not able to make the March 6th meeting, but I understand that there was a robust discussion, and you asked us to do some more homework, so we did more homework, and we're bringing that back to you. This packet does include all scenarios, so that you could have it easily at your fingertips, what the original scenario brought to you in March 6th was, as well as the two new ones that we're bringing, and the adopted capital improvement plan for this funding year. And remember that when we look at the capital plan, it is always year one that we are actually funding, so that is the, that is the program year, that is the, the actual year, and all other years can and always do change. So when Scott said that we were presenting to you a scenario with a $20 million wedge for the Pine View classroom wing, that is in year two. So if things and conditions change, as they always do, from this year to next year, when we do need to fund the Pine View classroom wing, if we're going to proceed with it in the next calendar year, then we still have a year to make a decision as to whether or not you're going to do the borrowing. You are not borrowing this year, there is no borrowing allocation for the 1819 budget year.
Can you take me through the history of specifically the Pine View classroom wing as far as where it has appeared in various CIP plans, and where it appears now with and without borrowing? And so we contemplated building it in what year originally?
So that's a really good question, because the Pine View classroom wing has moved, I'm, this is now the fourth time I've brought you a capital improvement plan in my tenure, and it has changed repeatedly through those, through that period of time, and I'm sure before me with Ken Marsh, it also changed. For a number of years, the first two years, it was, it was, it was moving to the left as you would expect it. Last year, in last year's capital improvement plan, we moved it out. And we did it for two, when we moved it out, it should have moved into year two last year, it didn't, we kept it in year three. And we did that.
We put years on that, so it was?
So it should have moved into this, would, would have been the, it would have been funded this year, would have been started construction for this year, the 1819 school year, in last year's, if, if it had all continued to move. We moved it so that it was going to be in the, and this is tab, this is attachment four.
You said it was moving to the left, as you would expect, five to four to three?
Right.
That was always the 1819 school year, so.
For a number, well, for a number of years. And then last year, that changed.
That's how it shows up in the current order for CIP.
Right. The current board of CIP has Pine View in the, this is under other schools.
What tab is that in?
It's the last tab, tab five.
No, tab five is board docs, you're tab three, but within tab three, it's attachment five?
Yeah, it's in, right, I'm sorry, it's in my packet, under attachment five. It's the Pine, the Pine View classroom wing shows up in the 1819, 1920 school year, so it's a split funding year, it's split funding. And we did that, originally, that would have come into the 1718 school year, but we left it, we pushed it, and we pushed it out because the current project that we have at Pine View wasn't ready for the classroom wing. So it wasn't a function of funding, it was a function of logistical, when could we actually construct this, this facility? When we proposed the first version to you on the 6th, we, we moved that out to 2021. And that was because we were mindful of the meetings that we had with you in January, where you had indicated to us a, a non-desire for borrowing funds. So in order for us to pay for it with cash, along with all of our other priorities, we had to move it out. What I understand happened at the, the meeting on March 6th is that you provide, you asked us to relook at that, that that project is a priority project, along with the, the construction of the classroom wing at Gocio. And so that's where we're now presenting to you different options. So in the past, yes, that was moving to the left, we did push it out last year, but it was not about a funding consideration. Last year, it was about a logistical, when can we actually construct this, given that we already have a project on the campus, and we needed to finish that project before we started the classroom wing.
And that's, so that's 1920, correct?
1920.
Okay, thank you.
So if we currently, the Pine View classroom wing, which we're talking about borrowing for, is attachments two and three in the CIP section. So if we currently, the Pine View classroom wing, which we're talking about borrowing for, is attachments two and three in the CIP section, either way, either place, it shows up in the same place, it's just whether you're borrowing for the funds or you're just letting it, or you're letting your funds pay for them.
I'm sorry. So you're saying whether we borrow funds or not borrow funds, the building of the classroom wing would still happen in the same year?
Under the two proposals brought to you today.
Thank you.
And that, the funding is in 1920. So it would give us this year to do, to continue planning, which we've already started with the project, and we would fund it 1920. And that, as Mr. Robinson said, is in both proposals we're bringing forward to you today, funding, borrowing funds or not borrowing funds. The difference is the amount of resources available at the end of the day if you don't borrow funds.
In both cases, that's two years earlier than you saw it on March 6.
Right.
Okay.
And that's the same thing I want to, because the other major difference in the proposal you're seeing today is that Gocio classroom wing, which to Dr. Bowden's point, last year, that is another project that definitely has had some movement in various capital improvement plans. And in fact, last year, we took it out completely, so it is not found in last year's. It was the first year in a number of years it wasn't in it, but it was not allocated last year. We brought it, having heard your commitment, your commitment to wanting to make that project happening, and that we were able to secure the need approval that we needed to get from the Department of Education. We, yeah, we brought it back this year. Originally, we had it funded out in year four in the March 6 edition. This time, we've brought it, like the Gocio project, or the Pine View project, we've brought it back up into year two. And that is in both scenarios, with or without funding, with or without borrowing, the Gocio classroom wing is in year two.
Shirley, I'm sorry, Shirley had wanted to speak.
So without the borrowing, what other projects would we cut to fund the $20 million?
Again, the major difference in the allocation with and without borrowing, so can I quickly go through some of the other changes between the March 6 addition that you saw in this addition? We also brought back the funding for the buses, which we had, as Scott mentioned, we took out in the March 6 one. You asked us to look at which projects we could bring back without affecting our level of, that may have affected our level of service. This is one of those that we thought may affect our level of service, so we brought back the $3 million that we had taken out in the March 6 addition for funding of buses. We also brought back the $150,000, a fairly small amount, but $150,000, which allows our planning department to work with design build firms to actually come up with a true funding source and how much it's really going to cost us when we're talking about a project, i.e. a Gocio or a Laurel Nakomas or other projects that we're thinking about doing rather than just wagging it in the capital improvement plan. That $150,000 allows us to do, have a real design build firm give us a true cost.
Let me finish the discussion on Gocio. Gocio has been on the record since Carol Todd was here. So that's before you, and you're here seven years now?
Were you looking at?
You.
Seven?
You're on the board seven years now?
No.
Hardly four.
Four?
Four in June?
Six, yeah.
Yep.
With the appointment, and it was put off from that.
Four. Four on June. Anyway, keep going.
Yeah, it's been
From that, it's like 10 years it's been on the books to do.
We'd have to go back and do our homework, but it, Friggin' and I came in in the same year, and it's definitely precedes our
Precedes us, there we go.
It precedes us. It's, no, within four years. It definitely precedes our period. I could go back in the capital improvement plan and find out when it actually came on, but
I think the point is that it's been there for a long time, and it keeps getting moved. Is that the point you were trying to make?
Yeah.
Yes.
Well, and last year, we did take it out altogether, but that was because we didn't believe we would be able to get the need approval that we were able to secure this year from the state through our five-year. So we now have approval from the state to move forward with the planning of that project and construction.
Which you can do with or without borrowing?
Which we can do with or without borrowing.
Thank you.
Yeah, did you get your question?
No, I think we were, what are we going to, what other projects aren't we going to fund, but you said we're going to get to there?
So now that I've told you what the differences are, the difference between the borrowing for the $20 million for the Pine View classroom wing in year two, which again, you're not approving this year, you're just putting it in your capital improvement as something you would do next year if all conditions stay the same, which they never do.
Wouldn't that be nice?
The difference is the amount of fund balance you have remaining at the end of year two and the amount of reserve. We, this is not a board, a board require, thank you, a board requirement that we meet the same fund reserve holdback that you do for your other budget, but we internally have made that commitment. So in order for us to meet this budget without funding, without borrowing for Pine View, you would have to dip into those fund reserves, and you would go lower than our standard. But that's, so that's the difference, it's fund reserves.
What percentage would that be? Off the top?
7%? Is that where we go?
So what we hold back right now is 7.5% of ad valorem and sales tax. And if you went to the, if you went to the budget that Kathy was just walking through, the one that doesn't include borrowing, you'll see a, you'll see a total fund reserve of $7.8 million. 7.5% is actually $8.6 million, so we're just short of $1 million shy of our 7.5% fund reserve.
Okay. And, but then you, but you provided two, so everything is borrow or not borrow?
Right.
And so thank you. The other elements that we talked about, and if I didn't see this, forgive me, as we evaluate how to pay for the hardening in year one, so you guys brought back the $150 for design, I can't remember what
It's for planning.
Construction service, planning services.
Mm-hmm.
And the buses. Did we look, and I know this was something, I don't recall if it was Jane had mentioned the refresh going from four to five, just from a financial impact, have we looked at what that cost differential is?
So all of the other projects that we had taken out in the first time you saw this and on the 6th, we have maintained. They are not back.
The answer to your question is yes, and I know that Jane and Mr. Ben Swanger had some conversation, and Joe is with us, so if you'd like him to come up and talk about that, I think he's excited to do that.
Okay. I just wanted to see, yeah, as we evaluate, okay, sure.
Yes. I have rescinded my desire to go to five, because after having a good conversation with Joe and remembering that we at one time were at three, and then we went to five during the recessionary years, and back at fourth seems to be a better fit.
Welcome, Joe.
So before we leave that, can I just ask a question of Scott? You made the statement in year two, and as I look at kind of the bottom line, that $7.8 million fund reserve, you've got above it a number in parentheses, and they taught me in accounting school that parentheses are never good, are they, Eric?
Parentheses are never good, that's right.
So the $937,000, so that is the amount below the 7.5.
That's correct.
But am I correct that the following year, we're a good 13 million? So it's a one-time?
It is, and frankly, we've talked about this with the Capital Projects team. If the direction we got today was use the version that doesn't include borrowing, but make this so we don't go below 7.5%, we could do that. I mean, what we'd have to do is move some things around, like look at, do we reduce the number of buses we buy or something like that? But we could bring you back a budget that had a 7.5% fund reserve in 1819 and make those parentheses go away.
I'm confused. I just want to make sure I understood what you just said. You said we could build Pine View without borrowing, we can build Gocio without borrowing, we can not go below 7.5% without borrowing, or there's a scenario, we may actually dip below 7.5% one year. I just want to make sure, I'm the, you know, new guy, I don't understand all these numbers as well. I just want to make sure, that is what you're saying?
Yes, that is what we're
That is what you're saying? Thank you.
We'd have to reduce the buses.
Well, we'd have to reduce something, or we'd have to move something. Again, this scenario, we brought Gocio and Pine View back two years from where it was in the last time you saw it. We might bring Gocio back one year, and so it would be found in year three of the plan instead of year two. I mean, there are alternatives that we could look at. We are providing you an alternative here, and it does not have to be the final alternative. We are under no, we always set our capital improvement schedule fairly aggressive so we can be done early, but if you said in April, I want to see more scenarios, we can bring you more scenarios in April before we get to the plan.
What is the cost of, how old are our buses now?
The oldest bus that is routed is 14 years, and that's been our standard for a long, long time, is we keep the oldest routed bus at 14 years.
I thought it was 13.
And can you talk about where that, what's magical about 14 versus 13 or 15? Was there a history to
Yeah, it's cost of operation, so you kind of look at, as you begin to do repairs to fleet, whether it's buses or white fleet, because with white fleet, it's between nine and 10 years normally, but there comes a point in time where the cost of repair is worth more than the salvage value of the bus, and you say at that point, it makes more sense to just salvage the bus and buy a new one, so.
Would it be correct to say that if you delayed purchase for a year, there would be an impact on maintenance costs to keep that bus for the 15th year?
Yes.
Okay.
And the other thing you need to be aware, when you do that, because Ms. Goodwin asked that question yesterday, so to be fair to the rest of the board, I will bring it to everyone else. She asked me, is there plans, if we delay the bus purchases for a year, is there plans to catch up? And the answer is no, there is no plans to catch that up. So for at least the foreseeable future, we would be changing the cycle.
Which makes me nervous with having our kids on the road on those buses.
Although we have used, let's be clear, we have used buses as an example. So there are $140 million of revenues in the capital budget in year two, and so if the board said, find a million dollars, shame of us if we can't do that. There's a lot of options. We could roll back our paint and carpet schedules, I mean, there's just a lot of things you could do in addition to delaying projects and find $900,000.
Another question or thought about busing? There's every intention of the legislature perhaps to bring back the moving the mileage of coverage to one and a half from two. There is a group forming to write a white paper this summer, and I think that might be a prudent idea since we're grossly unfunded now at the two-mile mark.
And that same legislation also contemplated expanding the safe walking condition definition beyond case six. Not that that's enormous implications in Sarasota, but both of them increase your service level expectations.
So can I just have an aside? Can I put that on your radar to price the difference between one and a half and two? That as we look to put together a legislative platform, if it's going to go to one and a half, that we ask for the delta of what is it to provide that service? And so if we could cost that out as well as the case six thing that you talked about, just to hang a number on it, so that if they say, we want you to do this, we can say, good, it'll cost us X.
True.
As long as he's going to do that, can we also say, well, this is what it cost us, this is what you give us?
Yeah. So since Joe is sitting next to me, can I go back to Ms. Brown's discussion and remind everybody what the other changes are, and then when we get to the section of computers and IT, which there's, since several, Joe can
I heard something, and I just want to make sure that, do you want to have a conversation about leasing on four versus five-year cycles, or have you been satisfied on that point? And we can put Joe back to work.
I'm very sad.
You don't want to talk about it?
I wanted to, I thought that, but there was, we were calculating what the cost differential was. Did we have, was there, did we get a financial impact comparing the four to five year?
Yes, I can provide, so just simple math, at the four-year mark, it's approximately $10 million a year, or 40 million for the life of the refresh to impact all of our schools. To go to five years, it would still be 40. It would, in essence, then become an $8 million a year project. But please keep in mind, that is not a $2 million a year instant savings. It is in essence, because the total payment of the lease is paid out over that five-year period, so now that 2 million is divided by five. You with me? So it's really a $400,000 a year for the first year savings, and then each year we push that out, it adds $400,000 to the capital savings because of the payments on the lease. So it's not the immediate relief to the capital budget that's there. The other part that I would share with you
1.2, 1.6.
Right, you got it.
Gotcha.
Mr. Robinson. But the additional piece that I would share with you then is then the cascading effect that presents to classroom instruction as we originally, when the refresh was originally put in place, it was designed as a three-year program. Then the budget cliff came, and that was not realistic, and so then it was pushed to a five-year program. As we entered into the end of that fifth-year program, we met with teachers, administrators, school support staff that said what worked well and what didn't work well. The two big outcomes of those meetings with various staff were, first, the schools needed more flexibility in the devices that they were able to provide, which we have been able to add additional flexibility every year. And then the other is that that fifth year of the equipment, it was impedingly slow in how they were able to impact classroom instruction. So I think it's a short-term solution that has long-term ramifications for our classrooms. It is one of the things that is a hill I am willing to die on, so to speak, in the interest of our teachers and students.
No, we
And if I could
That's all you need to say, we're good. No, I'm kidding, no, I'm
So what are you suggesting, Joe? Four years or to three?
If, no, so what I'm recommending is that we remain at the four-year course, and that if times change in terms of capital funding, you'll see me back here with a great big three on my forehead, subliminal messaging.
Okay, so for us to keep in mind is really ideally, it should be three. And four is because that's what we can afford. Okay.
And so the board knows, Joe was part of our conversations as to how do we come up with a budget that works for you here, and the IT department has already played to the tune of probably $3.5 million in reduction in a year. So just know that we've impacted his ability to do what we asked him to do, at least in the first year, and we appreciate his willingness to talk to us.
Both scenarios are four. You didn't make any
Correct.
No, we didn't make any changes. So quickly, just to follow up on what Scott said, when you look at which projects we are not funding in year one, we aren't funding the PE restroom, the bathrooms, we aren't funding the small projects.